Meetings with invocation and a pledge allegiance. If you care to join us, please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the many blessings you have bestowed upon us, Father. And we humbly ask for your presence tonight. Be with us, be with this commission, the staff and our residents, Father, as we work through the business in front of us. It's these things we ask in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There may be, I don't know if we have a new face or not, but I'll trudge through our... Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll go through the meeting procedures. The Island Planning Commission allows public comments for site plans and village preservation permits. The commission holds public hearings for rezonings, conditional use and special use permits and ordinance amendments. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how that proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to the zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Public comments on site plans and village preservation applications will be limited to 60 minutes total per application with a maximum of five minutes allocated for each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate testimony or terminate speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. First item on our agenda tonight is to approve the minutes of the special call meeting of the Island Planning Commission held on April 19th, 2022. Subject to any corrections? Shall move? Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion, no corrections, I understand. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And you have to stand?
I'm standing.
All right. You weren't here, I guess.
I was not here.
Okay, thank you. Public comment. This is Village Preservation, VP 5033, Pier Village Market LLC signage. Request for village preservation design review approval for a new sign on the existing building at 215 Mallory Street, St. Simons Island, parcel number 040436. The property is zoned village mixed use and island preservation design overlay district, Chris Morgan applicant. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Thank you. Stand.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Background for this application, the applicant is requesting village preservation design review approval for improvements to the signage at the Pier Village Market retail store located at 215 Mallory Street. The sign is currently, or was a circular design with the initials of the business and the proposed signage will have the name spelled out in the same style as the current sign. Right here is how the design is for the sign. This is the previous sign before renovations. Adjacent building facades. And your possible actions. Again, the applicant is here and that is the end of the staff review.
Please state your name.
Hey, I'm Chris Morgan. I'm the registered agent for 215 Mallory Street. Just any general questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Morgan? We have some, I tell you what, Mr. Morgan, wait just a second. We've got a couple of questions for staff perhaps. This sign is in place currently, is it not?
Yes, the sign is in place currently.
And didn't we just recently approve the facade of that building?
Yes, for Grekka Station.
Was the sign in place then as well?
No, it was not.
Okay. Mr. Morgan, you have anything to add? Does anybody have any questions for staff?
I do, Robert. I think last time this happened, we discussed maybe some sort of handout for the village folks so they could know that we had these requirements before putting signs up. Do we ever get around to doing that?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Chris and I were just talking about that before the meeting. So, yeah, that is on our list to do. So, we plan to do some kind of a, most likely a mailer sometime this summer. So, we'll get that out since we're seeing more of these projects. Thank you.
Wouldn't the signage companies, I feel like anytime I've ever applied for a permit for a sign, they have, certain ones have walked you through the process of what needs to happen. So, shouldn't they be responsible as well for letting everybody know?
Mr. Morgan? Yeah, well, that's a good question. Mr. Morgan, did you use a local sign company to produce the sign?
No, I built it and installed it myself.
Okay.
And I do apologize. I misread the local regulation and I missed the small print that said under a certain square footage, you have to have prior approval. So, my goal was to not go over that, but I did by a small percentage.
Okay. Yeah, we do require review of signs. Mr. Willis, you got it?
Well, you know, I agree. We've had so many of these. I mean, it seemed like every sign that goes up down there is already up. I mean, I don't know what it would take. I think just one letter is not enough. I think a periodic to the owners and the tenants would help. I mean, there's no problem with this sign, but there is a process, you know, and so...
Right. Oh, I have a question. Mr. Chair, so there are area restrictions, size restriction and cubic feet, I guess, sorry, square feet. Have those been verified and met?
Yeah, we don't have an audit process as far as going out and measuring. They'll get approved and then if there's a code enforcement complaint, then additional investigation into it will occur.
I've been on this commission for a number of years and signage applications in the past have included their square foot size. There's been discussion about those sizes. They've been verified by the sign, in this case, the sign maker. We didn't wait for a complaint and then audit.
Yeah, so when the application comes in, it'll have the specified size for the sign? And then that will get approval from staff?
It says it's 16.52 square feet, so it does have to be, what, below 24?
Right, below 24.
Yeah, Mr. Morgan, is your sign in compliance with our code?
Yes, it's way under 24 square feet. It's 16.52. Yeah.
Commission? Well, wait a minute. This is, is there any comment? No, thank you, Mr. Morgan. You can sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any comments that we have from anyone here tonight? Questions, comments about this application? Hearing done. Commission?
I'll make a motion to, you're looking for a motion, Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the application without changes.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the application? Hearing done. We'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate. That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Be aware next time. Next, VP 5037. This is at 202 Mallory, Mallory signage. Request for village preservation design review approval for a new sign on the existing building at 202 Mallory Street, St. Simons, parcel number 0404646. The property is zoned village mixed use and island preservation design overlay district. Lillian Portal applicant. Is Ms. Portal here? Is the applicant here?
Do not believe we have an applicant present or representation for this.
What will we do if the applicant's not present? I mean, what are our options?
Sure. I mean, the commission can still consider this agenda item. They have been notified of the date of the meeting and there has been correspondence with the applicant, so we're not sure about that. But you can still take up the application. If there's any questions, that may be a reason you want to defer it. But if there are any questions that staff can't answer, you can consider it. It's not a requirement for applicant to be present.
And the commission, have any thoughts, you know, if we should hear this or not?
I prefer not.
I'm okay with hearing it.
I'm okay with it, Mr. Morgan. Let's have a quick call, a show of how many are willing to hear it versus, I don't want to vote, but how many willing to hear it?
Oh, he won't hear it.
I'm voting.
Patrick?
I mean, if you don't bring it to vote, I'm fine, but if there's no one here to represent it, I don't know how we hear it.
Yeah, you know, I think...
But it's not a requirement. If it was a requirement, then you'd...
Yeah, but I think at the same time, they should hear what Mr. Morgan just heard, that these are important issues and just to allow them to just kind of not be here, I think is not quite right. I would feel better if we were unanimous on this, but because we aren't, and I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Duncan, I don't think we should hear it. Somebody want to make a motion to defer?
Well, wait, but you guys have a presentation, right, with the photographs and everything?
We do.
Okay. And are they compliant in their application in the process? Or is this another backwards application?
Yes, this is another, well, staff approved this before coming to IPC. Then it was reverted back after the fact, so we caught it kind of after the fact and brought it back to this process.
Right, at this point, at this point in time, the sign is there, is it not?
It is.
Yeah, so they aren't being penalized at all by us not taking any action?
Correct.
Because we are. Okay, I'll make a motion to defer to, what's the date of the next, June, what's the date?
Yeah, whatever the next meeting is.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
June 21st.
We have a motion and a second for deferral. All those in favor, please indicate. All those opposed?
Oh, no, I was...
We've got one opposed.
No, I'm not opposed. We can defer. Sorry. You just missed my hand up.
You're confused, are you? All right, this is public hearing, zoning decision. ZM 4993, King City subdivision, planned development district. Request for approval of a rezone of approximately six acres located at 101 Gould Street, St. Simons Island, parcel numbers 0404864 and 041519 for forest agricultural, cultural, FA and one family residential, R6, and planned development district, ZM 2006021, to a newly created planned development district. The proposed use is one family residential with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. Brian Hunt, Robert Civil Engineer, agent for the estate of Robert M. Torres applicant and Robert Miller Torres and Atlantic Southeast Enterprises Incorporated owners.
Chairman, I just have to sit this one out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 4993, King City subdivision, planned development district. This application was originally noticed for your April 19th meeting and the applicant did request a deferral to this meeting date. There was some additional information that they were working on after getting some questions from some neighbors or neighboring property owners. So, they're back on for this. So, they were deferred to this agenda. So, this is a mix of several different zoning districts currently. So, the property is forest agricultural, one family residential and planned development district. And it is an oceanfront property not far from here in the King City area. So, this is the property. There are two separate parcels that are included. So, this is Gould Street right here. This is the public access at the end of Gould. There is a star located where the larger parcel is. And then there is a smaller parcel right here. That's oceanfront. There is a property that kind of juts into the larger parcel that it wraps around on Gould. So, parcel size is approximately six acres and they are proposing to create 20,000 square foot lots. So, of the zoning districts that are currently out there, the zoning sizes range from basically 20,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet for the R6. They are proposing to have 20,000 square foot lots across the board and consolidate everything into one new planned development district. They are not proposing any minimum lot width and they are proposing for their only use to be single family residential. So, there's no other uses proposed in this PD. And so, just kind of a, just a point of information is zoning districts that have similar lot sizes, you know, FA or R20, also have 20,000 square foot lot minimums and those do have a lot width of 100 feet. So, with this property, they are proposing no minimum lot width, just so they can have flexibility on how those lots are designed. So, they do have a proposed PD text that's included in your packet. And then this is their proposed master plans. Since it is a PD, they are required to have a master plan. And right now, as I mentioned, they're proposing all single family development. They have not proposed a subdivision plat at this time. So, we do not have a preliminary plat that's been submitted to the county. So, they have not submitted anything really showing where those lots would be located on the property. And here's some photos of the site. So, there is an existing single family home on the property. So, on the top left is a single family home. On the bottom right is on that property looking out kind of towards the ocean, kind of towards the golf course. And then this is another, this is a little bit further up Gould Street, looking out onto the Sea Island Golf Course on the other side of the property. So, the applicant did submit this map and requested that we show this to the planning commission. So, this is other oceanfront zoning on St. Simons. And as I mentioned, they are proposing the 20,000 square foot lot size. And as this diagram shows, a lot of the zoning along the ocean, it does have smaller lot sizes. So, as most likely you're aware, a lot of what we have along the oceanfront is resort residential. That's a 6,000 square foot minimum. And then we also have village residential and R6. A lot of the King City properties are R6. There's that one block that's R9 within King City. These are your possible actions. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Robert Civil Engineering is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
I have a question. Based off of the way that it's zoned right now, what are the existing amount of lots that could be created off of this property?
So, it's a six acre parcel and I didn't bring my staff report with me, but I think I put that in the staff report. So, they could do, I think it was maybe a maximum of 12 lots, but that'd be more than they could do.
Okay, it said a maximum of, that you could do 13 based off of that 20,000 square feet?
Yeah, and that'd be more than they could do, but that would be just looking at either land and dividing it by the amount of square footage for 20,000.
The current zoning, what does it allow, the existing PD as it is now?
So, under the existing golf, and it's Sea Island, I think it's Sea Island Retreat Golf Course PD is what that is. I mean, I know there's a variety of hospitality uses associated with the golf course. I don't have that in front of me right now. I'm not sure if applicants can maybe share a little bit more information on that. But there's definitely more uses than what they're proposing to do now with the single family.
It seems like I recall that at one time, there was even a townhouse project proposed along that frontage.
Okay.
That's what I was wondering.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. What would be the height restriction, the building height?
I have 35, yeah, 35.
35 in the text.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of too small. So, yeah, 35 feet.
And does this fall within the village preservation district? It's outside.
This is outside of it, correct.
The lots, I have assumed, and maybe that's the wrong thing to do, that the lots would be based on development area. There's a, it looks like there's a fair portion of, if you go back to the map, there's a fair portion of marsh, marshland that's included.
Correct, yes.
It doesn't really, it doesn't really say that anywhere, unfortunately. To me, it should be very explicit that what we're talking about is development area and not the part of the, and the six acres is, is that the entire tract to include the marsh?
That is the entire tract, correct.
Right, so the actual development area is, it could be two thirds of that perhaps?
Yes.
Just guessing, maybe four acres perhaps? So, there would be, so actually the 20,000 square foot lots would be based on the development area. But I would think I would like to see that stated somewhere in the text, that it's based on development area. Another question I have is there's no minimum lot width in there at all. It seems like, it seems like there should be something, otherwise we could end up with 30-foot wide lots. You know, it is possible as we've seen to put a house on a 30-foot wide lot. We have seen it on St. Simons. So, I would like to, at least some sort of reasonable bottom end for what we could expect on these. I think that needs to be in here, although I understand the need for flexibility. I think the size of the lots, 20,000 square feet, is certainly admirable in a way, not to have that much square footage devoted in that area. The areas that are around there, we've got, and I think, Ms. Leaf, you pointed out that there's some R6 zoning adjacent to this property?
Yeah, it's probably a little bit off the map, but yeah, this is basically the only block in King City that's zoned R9 right here. But just to, kind of to the right of this, is all R6. And those are, you know, smaller, substandard King City lots.
I believe those are substandard lots right there in view, are they not?
Correct, yeah, these, yeah, definitely these lots. I can't speak for the oceanfront ones. I think those are larger, but these definitely are substandard.
So, if, I'm sorry, Ms. Chair, clarify the point about the developable area. If it's six acres, including marshland, and if the chair's just visual estimate was the upland is approximately four acres? So, would you divide the four acres by 20,000 to come up with a maximum number of units? Or is it divided into the six acre?
So, it would be, it would be the four acres. So, we can't, yeah, we can't use the marsh.
Yeah, and it says in the, it says in the text that the lot size, this is the lot size of, Commissioner Duncan, the lot size is 20,000 square feet.
Correct.
That would exclude, in my mind, that would exclude any right of ways or anything like that as well. So, that's basically just the lot.
So, we're talking, look at it, a maximum of 10, if we take four acres and divide it by 20, it's, right?
Right. I think, well, and actually, in reality, it may even be less than...
It's going to be somewhere less than that, given the common space.
Well, the right of way, you gotta have a street.
Well, if you have, well, we could... Well, if you have, well, we can, I'm sure that they could answer that question, as we get up here.
Have you got any more questions for staff, maybe, maybe the applicant can help us out?
No, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to clarify what, what, the math, okay, we're good.
Do we have a representative? Please state your name.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Roberts, thank you for your time tonight, and this, this is a lower dense, density than we have seen along the, the beachfront, and the owner was insistent to, to make it less dense, and like you pointed out, the development area will only include the upland, the upland's 4.12 acres, so your, your assessment of it was right on just over four acres, and so at the 20,000 square feet, we're, we're definitely less than 10 lots, and the exact configure, configuration of that is, is to be determined.
The existing house that's on there, that will be demolished, correct, the one that?
It's, it's my understanding, but that, that would have to be confirmed by the owner, they're, they're not sure, I think, right now, that, what, what will happen to that.
But then that piece of property would be, I mean, that's included, that square footage is included in that, so if they kept that, then your lots would decrease?
That's right.
Okay.
And Mr. Roberts, you have any idea about the, about the lot width, some, some sort of standard?
Yes, 60 would be amenable to us, if you wanted to add that as a condition, certainly 60 would be, would be good.
60 feet, and that's, and that's, that's what our, our 6 allows currently?
That's right.
Any other questions for Mr. Roberts? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
This is a public hearing, all those who would like to speak for this application, please come forward.
Good evening Commissioners, good to be with you, I'm Joey Strength, an attorney with Hunter McLean, here on behalf of Sea Island Company, the owner of the lodge, which is the adjacent property owner to the planned development property, I'm speaking in support of the application, the Torres family and their representatives have been in discussions with Sea Island for several months, really about the plans related to this property. As a result of those discussions recently, the parties agreed to a set of guidelines related to sort of buffer and landscaping requirements for the shared property line between the properties, and as, and, and those guidelines will ultimately be included in the covenants for the neighborhood, or a set of, a separate set of recorded documents. So I'm really here to express appreciation to the Torres family for their consideration of the adjoining owner's requests, and to express our support for the application.
Any questions for Mr. Strength? Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please state your name, sir.
I'm Stan Keiker, I live on Butler Avenue, pretty close to where the Torres compound is, I don't know why I'm cheering up, I just want to say that many years ago, Mr. Torres showed me a little drawing that he had for what he might want to do with this, this property, and it had a lot more houses on it than what this appears to, to be doing. I can only say, as a neighbor, my only concern is traffic on Butler Avenue, and I like a lot fewer cars going up and down that street than more cars, so I support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Keiker. Any questions for Mr. Keiker? Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, anyone who would like to speak against this application?
Mr. Chair.
I would, Mr. Chairman, but first, I'd like to give someone else an opportunity to be hateful.
Ms. Chair.
Excuse me, just a second.
Could we reorient the lectern toward the commission?
Mr. Torres will help us out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan.
I'm Julian Smith, I have owned and enjoyed a house on St. Simons for 29 years now, going up on 30 years, that my wife and I decided to buy a house here. I'm going to say something that will surprise some of you, shock some of you, annoy some of you, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it, I've reached that age, and I have to set this up by explaining, I grew up in a weekend and summer resort community on the north shore of Lake Ponchatrain, back in the late 30s and early 40s, before the causeway was built from Norlands to the north shore, which ruined my hometown and turned it into a bedroom community for the city of Norlands, that causeway was opened in 1956 and widened, et cetera. But I also spent a, a good part of my childhood at my grandfather Smith's summer vacation house in Fort Walton Beach, it was really a shack, or in my grandfather Riggs's house in Long Beach, Mississippi, two or three blocks from the Gulf of Mexico. So I know about communities that grew up around the automobile, and I call to your attention that in two years, in two years, 2024, we are going to celebrate the centennial, the 100th anniversary of what we now call the FJ Torres Causeway. FJ Torres, who was city manager in Brunswick, as I believe, did something great for the city of Brunswick, for the, for the business community in Brunswick, by making it easier to get to St. Simons rather than having to take a ferry, a long way around and so on. I came here in the summer of 1946 with my father to visit one of his Navy buddies, his Navy buddy had bought one of the houses built for Navy pilots in, in Kings Terrace. My father had come back from the Navy and didn't really want to start work, he was a drug dealer, I'm sorry, a pharmacist.
Can we get to the project, please?
I'm getting to the point.
Okay, thank you.
And I spent the good part of the summer of 1946 carrying a golf bag for my father, and spent a lot of time on the beach, now let me get to the point. As a planning board member in another community, I always spoke to the highest and best use of a property, and I appreciate that these lots are going to be twice, or maybe three times as large as some of the nearby lots on Gould Street, but I'm going to disappoint Mr. Keiker and others by saying, I would go, in this case, I would recommend a lower and better use, in memory of the opening of the causeway, which brought flivers to, to the island, I would suggest that what we really need is some diversity, I would suggest either a two-story budget motel near the beach on that site, too bad about the traffic, but the causeway was to bring traffic here, and the mess we're in on St. Simons is the legacy of that causeway, and, and if you don't like the notion, if your family doesn't like the notion, sorry, of a motel, then how about a nice RV park? Now, this comes out of my nostalgia for the time on St. Simons in the, right after the Second World War, before the McMansions were even dreamed of, people didn't have that kind of ambition, they were happy with a small cottage, that time has passed, I'm nostalgic for it, and unless, in case you don't know, nostalgia is a disease, so I'm old, I'm an old fart, I, I got my problems, and I got nostalgia, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this application? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of, of this and commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Move we approve ZM 4993, approve a proposed zoning decision with a modification of a minimum of 60 foot lot width, and as the rest is presented.
If I may, could, could, could you add development, that the lots are based on development area?
And the lots are based on the development area, sure.
Second, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call the question, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, sir. Last on agenda is update on the ordinance amendments of, as, as I'm sure you all are probably have heard by now, we did have a, a first, call it organizational meeting of our, of our committee, and as, as Mr. Worley pointed out, that we needed to be charged by the county commission, so that's where we are now, that hopefully will take place this week, Ms. Leaf, is it going to be on the agenda for the meeting? Or do we know? Mr. Worley.
So Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners took up this discussion at their work session this afternoon, and they, they got staff to, well, the consensus of the board was for staff to bring the item to them on Thursday, the, the current proposal that the board wants to hear on Thursday is that the eight members that were at that meeting on, on Monday be considered for appointment, they want to look at the idea of appointing a county commissioner to that group as well, and what they wanted to do was at that meeting, decide that, that membership, and then on the 23rd, have that group meet again for the purpose of refining the process of procedures that they are going to follow in the ordinance review, they had some concerns about some of the ways in which the group was going to operate, for instance, I think the input we got from the Commissioners was that they'd like the public input, public comment to come at the beginning of a meeting rather than at the end of the meeting, that including written comments, and any written comments that are submitted be writ, read into the record, they wanted to make sure that stakeholders, various stakeholders, but I think especially the technical users of the ordinance get substantive opportunities to meet with this group, to give their input, again, maybe prior to changes to certain sections rather than after the fact. I think some of the Commissioners expressed some concern with notice, I think at the meeting last week, one of the ideas was that each week, you would decide what you're going to talk about next week, and I think some of the Commissioners expressed some concern that folks at work, especially in the development community, need a little bit more notice of what's going to be discussed, they'll have time to look over whatever's going to be talked about, and formulate some ideas and, and get some feedback to this group, so those are kind of some of the concepts that we are hearing today, that the board would like y'all to look at, or this group to look at at their next meeting, and then come back to the board at their next meeting with a proposal of, here's how we'd like this to run.
Thank you, Ms. Worley, which, which Commissioner Drew the short straw?
Commissioner Rafowski volunteered, they, they offered it to Commissioner Booker, and he very quickly declined the, the honor of survey.
So on Monday, would we be able to discuss, kind of like, that, that whole format and the, the stakeholders, and, you know, like, if we could create specific meetings for specific trades, you know, like, if we have a developer trade, a developer meeting, an architectural meeting, because I know that this is being circulated, you know, especially around, like, you know, all the local architects and, and things like that, so that they're going to come to us with their comments and suggestions, and maybe if it's streamlined, then we can discuss that on Monday?
Right, and I think that's what, today, that's what the board communicated to staff that they want to consider on Thursday, is, is maybe create this group, and then your charge at the first meeting is to say, here's how we would like to operate, here's how we would like to solicit input, both from the public and from, you know, these groups that you guys are talking about, here's how we would, sort of an outline of the process to say, you know, we're going to talk about these things first, these things second, or some sort of plan so that folks have enough time to know, hey, we're talking about design guidelines at this meeting, so then folks who are interested in that have an opportunity to read the ordinance, think about it, and then solicit some, some input, so yeah, that's the kind of stuff that they'll want, they indicated to us that they'll want this group to address first, and then when y'all decide that, we take that proposal to the board, and they say yes or no to that, or please change this.
And they're aware that this might push their deadline that they've given us?
I think they are, yes.
Okay.
I, I will say, I think that their goal to, is to hear the last piece of this puzzle at their first meeting in June.
The last piece of the puzzle of the structure of what we're about to do.
And then that, at that point, hopefully, everything will be worked out, and everyone will know what the charge of this group is, how it's expected to operate, and from that point forward, it'll be left to fulfill its mission.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, have any, any input on that, any questions that we may ask Mr. Worley or staff?
I'm only calling you, Roberts, you wanted, you had a, a number in mind for people we had sitting on that committee, and now we've opted for, do we need to add another person to keep it odd?
Well, I think, I think Commissioner Rafowski is at large, is he not?
He is at large, and they express a strong desire that they're not, that not being even number.
He would, he would be a voting.
Right, but you had, you had a specific number you wanted to have on the board, on the, on the committee for, to keep votes, to keep votes odd, an odd number of votes, right?
Well, there's, we've got, we've got eight.
So this makes nine.
Yes, so nine, yeah, yeah, so now Rafowski makes it, now, now we're good, right, yeah, I think, I think that would be a, a good, a good idea. One, one last thing, is there anyone out there who would want to make a comment about what we just talked about, I'll give you a couple of minutes. Time's up.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, all right.